It's not as cold as it usually.
I'm the only one.
Like eighty?
Two, seventy-two.
I like two. I love these.
Let's see what he does.
Yeah, they didn't tell me which one won.
It won't.
We could do, we could do that though.
It's gonna be one of those. Not the, uh, it's not, no, what's the other ones that come out like golf balls? Hell, it's gonna be hell.
Gets tired very easily and I get tired very easily, but.
You let me ask something, when you scan.
I was whining.
I gotta get my knee down.
I'm not limping.
I can feel like if I scanned something.
One day I went through all the therapies today and she put my leg in a position, she goes, okay now.
When you pull it out again?
Yeah, can't really do that. I said, let me try the other leg just to see what I'm comparing it to. And I could, you know, it's basically this move.
No, but, but.
I can do that.
Look at him, he's turning. He is a fast.
You know better.
I try, I try. Do you, do you go here? Where do you go first?
Yeah, motivate. Yeah, there. Yeah, and I walked down the first time today. I drove on Friday. But I'm supposed to be going back to.
Yeah.
You need three. I got them on my side.
I got two, I got two.
All right, Mike, are we live on here? Hey guys, just keep in mind, any conversations right now are being picked up by the mic. So we are live.
You can sit up here, Bill, sit up here. All right, it's a more comfortable area.
All right, can anybody stand for the pledge please? Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Welcome everybody, this is a work session, so keep in mind, the rules for this is there will not be any public comment tonight, we're not gonna treat it like a business meeting, even though we are in the business meeting room, because we have a public hearing tonight on the budget, so that is the reason. So it'll be an opportunity for the public to weigh in on that, but it will not be the regular public comment portion. I wanna welcome the former supervisor and former village trustee, what years again, sir?
Seventy-eight to eighty-one.
Seventy-eight to eighty-one, those are good years. They were good years. All right, welcome, Rick. Is it, take, take, take the scarf off, it's not that cold, is it that cold in here?
Yes.
My gosh.
He runs cold.
All right, he runs cold. All right. All right, for, for tonight, um, everybody, there's a copy of the agenda back there. Uh, the board just came out of an executive session on a number of personnel matters. Um, the most important thing for tonight, what, Mike? You don't have agendas back there. Mike, can you do me a favor and make a copy, just put a couple of them back there so we have them?
Oh, he's got it.
Okay.
Bill, don't.
All right, thank you. All right, so. Here, Mike, take this one, this one's good shape. There you go. I'm gonna make a motion to open up the work session for the village board for January two thousand and twenty-four. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right. First item of business is gonna be the public hearing on the two thousand and twenty-four fiscal year budget. The board has been grappling with this, the department heads submitted their budget, I'm sorry, sir.
Apologies, I think you have to open the public, the, uh, public hearing as its own distinct, uh, hearing.
Yep.
So that would be the motion, so move to open the public hearing, uh, for the, uh, for the twenty-twenty-four fiscal year budget.
May I have a second? A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Bill. Um, the department heads submitted their budgets about, hmm, four weeks ago, five weeks ago. The village board has been, um, in receipt of those. Um, everyone is familiar with the fact that, uh, we lost our village treasurer who went to the village of Highland Falls. So Gene Mahoney, who was the village clerk here for twenty-nine years, and the village treasurer for ten years of those twenty-nine years, agreed to come back in an ad hoc part-time basis to help us get through the budget season. So, the way that it works is, if we do not approve the budget by February first, because the village fiscal year runs from March first until February twenty-eighth, thank you, Michael, February twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth. This year it'll be twenty-nine since it's leap year. Um, if the village board does not approve this budget, this draft budget, the draft budget becomes the budget for that year. So, if there's any questions or issues, um, trustees have been reaching out to department heads. Um, I've spoken individually with department heads, I've sat down with the village treasurer. Um, the goal this year, we have about a seven million dollar budget, four million on the village side and three million in the water department, which takes us to about seven million dollars. We had a tax cap this year of one point oh-two percent. Our goal is always to stay underneath of that, even though the village board voted to exceed it in the event it was necessary. Um, we elected to use some of our fund balance, we are in a good position with a significant amount of unallocated or available fund balance. We moved that over, which allowed us to stay underneath the tax cap. So, without any further ado, I'm going to open it up to the public for anyone that wants to speak in regards to the twenty-twenty-four fiscal year budget, you can speak to that item and that item only, if anybody'd like to speak, I'll offer an opportunity to step up to the podium, just state your name and your address and you can address the board.
That's Richard Randazzo, in town of Cornwall, nice to be here.
Good to see you, sir.
Board of trustees. Uh, the reason I wanted to come to the public hearing is, I, I saw where, um, you've scheduled a joint meeting in the town board and the village board to discuss water rates and apparently improvements, multimillion dollar improvements that are gonna have to be made to the water system and all. But in, you know, preparation of that, I thought it'd be a good time to just ask these questions. I don't expect that there'll be answers tonight, but hopefully over the next week or two, I can get them. So I'll break it down as follows, um, the thing that I'd like to ha, look at is the total water consumption uh, through billings for the town and village for, take it for a twelve-month period for, um, twenty-twenty-three. Um, total revenue from the billings for the town and the village. Uh, how much of the consumption, uh, in the village on a, on an annual ba, or a gallons basis? And also gallons, I'm sure this, I know it's a, it's a lot of numbers, but I know that Mike has great records and I'm sure you can show the total amount of water that was delivered to the town residents and the total amount that was delivered to the village residents. Um, also annual revenue from water sales, uh, to village water customers, and the same for annual revenue uh, in water sales from the town customers. The other thing I'd like to see, I know it would be available through the receiver of taxes, but, uh, I'd like to see the, or make available the twenty-twenty-three property tax bills, uh, showing the amount of taxes paid out of the water fund for the properties that are located in the town. So that would be town and county from January and school for September. Um, and if there's any, I, I, I looked at the budget, gave it a quick overview, similar to the town, but different. So I, I didn't really spend a lot of time digging into it. But I, I'm just curious if, um, if there's any, uh, general fund money that's actually paid into the water fund for any services or any billings or anything like that.
Only 'cause it's you, 'cause we're only speaking about the budget and you, sir, you raised some great questions in regards to, um, the Water IMA, which we're gonna, about to execute, uh, between the town and the village, and your questions, and I saw Mike fiercely scribbling down the questions. If you can do me a favor, Dick, if you can just email me, perfect.
I'll give it.
Just make sure me and Mike, exactly, 'cause I'm gonna turn to Mike and go, I, I need this.
I knew you guys are all good, but I know you're not gonna have this stuff on the top of your head, but I think it's, it's critical information.
Yep.
If the whole purpose of the joint meeting of the town and village board is to try to come up with some sort of a process, a method that's gonna make it fair and equitable.
Yeah.
For town and village residents who pay for the water.
Yep.
So that the, any repairs, and I know it's multimillion dollar mayor, you've mentioned it many times, but also there's gotta be an equitable distribution of the costs of those. So I think the, the closer we can come together, and we are a tight community, and act as one community when it comes to the water.
Yeah.
Let, let's be open and have that kind of dialogue.
I hope you're around too, January twenty-fifth, I don't know what your calendar looks like, but it'd be nice to have you with your experience and background in municipal government, plus living in Cornwall all these years, to, to be here, because there will be an opportunity for, uh, for public comment at that too, and we're gonna welcome that, so.
I'll look, I'll look forward.
Absolutely, so as long as we can have that, but yeah, and, and Dick, it is actually on the agenda tonight for the board to discuss, we'll probably hit it and quit it, we won't spend too much time on it, but really, um, and you were, it was nineteen seventy-four, and I'll just share this, nineteen seventy-four, Doc Donahue had Madam Farnsworth, um, put forth a resolution that the village board on May thirteenth of nineteen seventy-four, and I have the document, elected because the town refuses to waive the property taxes and school taxes on village facilities in the town, um, elected to raise the water rate for anyone outside the incorporated, um, district in the village to eighty percent. Starting with Mayor Moulton, he dropped it five percent, then going to Mayor Gross, one percent, and then Mayor Coin, who dropped it drastically down to thirty percent with, and I'm not, this is not an indictment of them, but what we're trying to do is figure out why we went from eighty to thirty, 'cause Mrs. McGillicuddy, who lives on the corner of Walkin', Don't Walkin', is ninety years old and on a fixed income, was paying eighty percent, and then it was dropped. I have no problem with that. I just wanna make sure that that two hundred thousand dollars, that's a huge part of our budget, 'cause we only have a four million dollar budget, not seventeen million dollars. If we can recoup that and then change our code to keep it where it is, so we're not raising anybody's water rates, that's our end state.
Just to comment on, if I may, mayor, I, I totally agree with you, and I did see that document that was brought out of the archives, the seventy-four letter signed by Mayor Donahue fifty years ago. And I mean, I will tell you my, from my own experience and where we've been and where we're going, we can talk about five percent, fifty percent, eighty percent, we can talk about all those things, it really doesn't mean a lot in today's conditions. I mean, back in the seventies, water rates were cheap.
A pittance.
Property taxes were cheap, it was basically petty, petty cash money.
Yeah.
That paid those things. Fifty years, that whole thing has changed.
Yeah.
And as I said before, we're all one community, we really have to come up with an equitable system that's gonna address the needs of the water system for the entire town and the village. So I, I look forward to that, and I know there'll be a lot of discussion, because there are some ins and outs as to the two hundred thousand dollars in taxes, and there's other things that I'm gonna offer.
Excellent, I look forward to, I look forward to it, and this is great, 'cause you've given us a, a starting plate on this, and, and I'll just say this and I'll just leave it at this. If the town buys the properties back from us for a dollar and waives the property taxes, it also waives the school taxes. We've been charging the school thirty percent when we should've been charging them eighty percent on all their facilities in the town. They only have two facilities in the village, the admin building and COH elementary school. I'm happy to keep everything at thirty percent, I want that two hundred thousand dollars back. And if we do that, it doesn't cost the town a nickel, because now you're still below that eighty percent, then the village board, I take it back to the village board and I say, let's just lower the rates by code, because we're not enforcing our code. And you're right, could it have been arbitrary? Sure, I don't know the reason, and to your points, I looked at the water rates, oh my gosh, you could've had water for ten years for, you know, four hundred dollars. The, the water rates were different, but I don't know why they settled on that eighty percent. They obviously felt that eighty was the fair ratio to mitigate that waiver of property tax. But we're gonna get to the bottom, and I want the town to have a voice in that, and I hope you come.
No, I, I'm looking for it, because, believe me, mayor, there's a lot of discussion to take place on this in terms of the taxes and everything that goes with it. I really do look forward to, hopefully being able to participate and give my views, we may not agree in the end, but I think if we lay all the facts out on the table, in the end, we come up with a fair and equitable system.
Yeah.
I think we'll all be happy.
And, and you do agree, the, the village board is bringing the town into this, because you know, the town, and I know that in the town, they've already started talking about, they're gonna do the same thing on the sewer, they're gonna open that, I hate to use that bad pun, they're gonna open it up and they're gonna take a look at that and see it, and make sure that everything is equitable, and make sure that today, what we're doing today makes sense for what we were doing in the past. So that's all we're trying to do, again, I don't wanna hurt Mrs. McGillicuddy.
No, 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 and I will say, on the sewer thing, I'm fairly well-versed in that, don't know it all, and that was again, over fifty years ago.
Yeah.
But.
Late sixties.
I've also seen around sixty-seven, sixty-eight.
Yep.
And I think the people that wrote that agreement back then were pretty smart and forward-thinking and all, so I think you're gonna find the document is had stayed fairly current, fairly accurate and, and fair, even fifty years later.
Sounds good, sir.
Thanks again.
Michael, Michael and I will work on that, actually, Michael will work on it, and then he'll show it to me, and then we'll make sure you get it. You got it, Dick.
Thank you.
All right, all right, anybody else regarding the budget want to, uh, weigh in? Carol? Nope. Okay, um, I'm gonna make a motion then to close the budget hearing, may I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, keep in mind, January twenty-second, next Monday is the Martin Luther King holiday, the village will be closed. So our business meeting is gonna be scheduled for January twenty-second, that is the date that the village board, absent the village, making any, uh, changes or decisions or debate dissent on the current draft budget right now, will vote on that so that it becomes our budget for twenty-twenty-four. Okay, all right, uh, next thing, I'm gonna move something up on the agenda, and I apologize for not having the agenda out here earlier, but we are going to move up, Dave, we're gonna move up the sewer manhole repairs, correct?
Yes.
And.
Yeah, I gave you the wrong one.
Okay.
My apologies, I gave you the surplus, sorry.
Yep, no worries, 'cause guess what, um, Councilor McKay actually sent to me the exact verbiage that he wants me to use for the resolution. Um, okay?
After, after, uh, I talked to him or?
Yep.
Okay.
This is, oh, that's the, the surplus, got it.
We'll do, we can do that, uh, two weeks.
Got it, okay, so you want me to hold that in abeyance?
I'll hold it.
Okay. Bless you. All right.
For procedural purposes, I know that we did hold a vote to open the work session, but this is a special meeting, right? Since we're passing, we're voting on a resolution.
We're going to have to go into a special meeting and then come back out afterwards, back into a work session.
That was the public.
That was the public hearing.
Hearing on that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to.
Yeah.
All right, so then I'm good, so we close the public hearing, I'm gonna make a motion then for the board to go into a special meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that simply allows us to pass a resolution, we'll come back out of that into a work session. So, the issue, the matter before us, um, the motion is, there is work needed on a number of manholes, um, within the Homeland neighborhood and, and area. The cost of repairs falls below the New York State bidding requirements, so the village, in accordance with its procurement guidelines, solicited quotes via its engineers. Our engineers, Pentangaro and Deutsch, recommended the village board accept the lowest quote, which came in from Nanini and Callahan to make the repairs. Now, just to tell you what this is involving, inside of Homeland, everybody knows where Homeland is, the pitch of the sewer system there is so slight that oftentimes the, um, the sewage, for lack of.
Solids.
The solids do not wash out as they're supposed to, they end up sitting under the manholes, and then sometimes can even back up into people's homes. It's happened several times. No fault of the village, it's been there for years, how do you fix it, how do you change it? You can't change the pitch on these pipes. One of the things that we can do, and I, we agreed when the supervisor, supervisor, the DPW superintendent, myself, and our engineers went out and looked at it a year ago, was we opened up the manhole covers, and a number of the manholes do not have curbing. Curbing is simply, I'm sorry, benching, I keep saying curbing, benching is simply something that looks like curbs that, that constricts and, and has the, the water flow, it directs it in the right direction, helps with the volume of water and the flow. So it doesn't sit under the manhole covers the way that it has been. So to do this, we wanted to have our engineers look at it, they agreed with it, we got, we put the bids out, we took the lowest bid, and that's what I'm gonna ask the village board to approve tonight. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna make the motion, Dave, do we have an, we have an amount on that?
Yes.
It's right in front of me, okay, so the manhole repairs, so we're talking about, um, we got three, uh, we got three bids, one for twelve thousand eight hundred dollars, one for nine thousand six hundred dollars, and Nanini and Callahan Excavating Incorporated came in at eight thousand seven hundred dollars to do the repairs this winter. So I'm gonna make a motion to accept the bid from Nanini and Callahan Excavating Incorporated for the amount of eight thousand seven hundred dollars. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Dave, anything to add?
How many manholes, Dave?
It's actually three.
Three.
It's only, it's only three in that area. What happened, uh, in the.
I remember.
Eighties, I believe it was, when they did, uh, some sewer work on Avenue A in that area. Uh, there was, there was an old line in there that they replaced, and when they did that, they didn't do the benching, it's manholes.
It's just copies of the resolution.
Whether it was overlooked, whatever the case may be, that was before I started here, slightly, before I started here. And, uh, so now we just need to take care of that problem.
Perfect, all right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five ayes. Okay, Jim, if you can just make that, okay, thank you. All right, with that said, I am going to make a motion to close the special meeting, may I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on then to our typical work session business, monthly department reports, treasure warrant number one. I'm not gonna read it tonight, I'll read it at the business meeting. Trustees, you have it in front of you, um, if there's any questions on it, obviously, we don't have the monthly water open balance reports, not available yet. Um, warrant number one, we don't have those numbers available yet, we'll have them by the twenty-second, excuse me, our next meeting. The, um, monthly revenue and expenditure reports by fund, general fund revenue, four million four hundred ninety-nine thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars and two cents. Expenditures of four million five hundred eighty-eight thousand seven hundred sixty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. Water fund revenues of two million three hundred fifty-two thousand four hundred forty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. Expenditures in two million one hundred forty-four thousand four hundred forty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. And the sewer funds revenue of five hundred fifty-one thousand two hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents, with expenditures of four hundred ten thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. Total receipts, seven million four hundred three thousand forty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents, or ninety point two-nine percent in anticipated revenues in seven million one hundred forty-four thousand one hundred ninety dollars and twenty cents, or eighty-seven point one-nine percent in anticipated expenditures through the month of December. The balance collected for sewer capital is five hundred sixty thousand and fifty-five dollars and two cents through December thirty-first. Any questions from the board? Moving on, uh, building department, Senor Carmona. Um, the building department, anything, any highlights you wanna point out to the village board? Does the board have any questions for Manny? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to the fire department, Chief Quinn. Anything to add, anything to point out, anything to highlight?
I don't, but I'll defer to the commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry, Fire Commissioner Gianpolo, is there anything that you would like to add or?
That'll be coming from me next month.
I, I was gonna say, I saw Charlie's, I saw his signature block.
We didn't catch up on it yet.
Got it.
I have nothing to add, do you have any questions?
Where are the flooding conditions? I'm assuming it's all over the building. All right, you mean responded to number vents, got it, got it, got it, got it, okay, I retract that question.
We got enough problems with that building, we don't need flooding down there too.
I know, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, and I wanna thank you, 'cause Rick came by and saw me last week, and we caught up on a bunch of matters related to, um, fire department, the fire commission, and one of the things I've committed to with him is actually sitting down and us hammering out what the roles and responsibilities and oversight of the fire commission is actually going to be. Where are they gonna have their teeth, what's in their lane, what's not in their lane, so, and then you're gonna start submitting these department, uh, reports each month. Excellent. All right, any questions from anybody else on the board? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to Chief Dixon, Police Department. Sir, anything to add, highlight, or make the board aware of?
Nothing really, uh, nothing really stands out, other than what I have in my report.
Okay, any questions from village board?
Mayberry, we almost had zero felonies, misdemeanor violation, arrests for the past month, we're just had two fraud identity theft, other than that, we've been goose eggs, all right.
Very good.
Don't jinx it, it's like, Dave says, don't mention this, the, they didn't say it, I said S-word in regards to the highway department, we don't wanna jinx it. All right, hearing none from any other, uh, trustees, we're gonna move on to the Public Works Department, David.
Uh, the, the report is pretty basic, but I do have a couple of things that, uh, I wanna bring out that, uh, we need to address, one, one of which you guys already know about, we discussed the replacement of product loader.
Yes.
Uh, something we, we, we're not gonna be able to wait much longer. Uh, I've been in contact with the case manufacturer and our representatives, there's actually build dates available in May and June for this machine, if we are so inclined to go forward.
And that's the bottom line, bare bones price?
Yeah, list of options are on the back of that page, I mean, it's not, uh, we're not buying a Mercedes Benz.
But when you're getting the options on there that you want, it's gonna go from three twelve to whatever you think.
No, that's the price.
That is going to be the price, with the options that you want.
That's the price delivered.
What's the model?
Yeah.
What is the model, Dave, again?
Uh, it's an eight.
Eighteen-one G-two Z-bar wheel loader.
Uh, sticking with Case, which is the machine we have now, which is twenty-two years old.
Wow.
That's good for you.
Buckets and attachments and so forth.
So we bought it.
Be interchangeable, yes.
So we bought it in two thousand and one.
Uh, it was delivered in two thousand and two, at the same time Mike's backhoe was delivered.
So it can be a parts vehicle, is what you're saying, kinda?
No, this would be, this would be shipped out, get rid of.
You would surplus it?
We've, uh, in the last two years, we've put about fifty thousand dollars in repairs in the machine.
I saw it out there in the fire department, uh, parking lot today, groaning and creaking and aching and.
Yeah, it's, it's got hard hours on it, not, not a tremendous amount of hours, it's a hard hour.
Got it. Okay.
So this is something that we have to really seriously consider, if the village board would like to go forward with it, one of the things that I suggest that you do is ban that.
Yep. That is, that is.
Have an opportunity to roll it forward in the future, if you have to borrow more for other expenditures that are coming up.
So, so, obviously, when we got, when we had our auditor report on the state of the fiscal health of the village, one of the things he pointed out is that we have a healthy fund balance, we all understand that, know that, um, even though we're using a small portion of it this year to stay underneath the tax cap. But I agree with Dave, and I think Jim Kane's position's the same, at least when you've talked to me in the past about things like this. I think this is a piece of equipment that is necessary and needed, and I am in favor in bonding this out. Anybody else have thoughts or feelings about?
So that's the state bid though, price, right?
Yes, that's, that's all.
And who's that off?
Sourcewell and, uh, also, uh, OGS, same price.
How long of a, how long of a bond would we look at with this, do you think? Five?
It's just starting five, yeah.
Okay.
I think you can even do, um, use some of the cash balance just as a, as a upfront, you know, down payment, fifty thousand, or whatever it might be. It's similar to what we did with, um, Donahue Farm, but with Donahue Farm, we put up more.
Yep, agreed. Anybody see anything, anybody have any issues on the board in regards to buying this piece of equipment and doing it that route through a bond?
You just, you say it's, uh, used.
No, this, 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 this will be, this will be a twenty-twenty-four.
Lucky.
Model year, it, it would actually be, if, if you guys say, go ahead and next, not next week, the following week, the fourth meeting, and give us the okay to go ahead, there's a couple of build dates that are available in May and June, we could actually have the machine delivered before next week.
So they don't have these on the lot, these are pieces of equipment they have to build.
When you, when you, especially when you buy all of OGS and Sourcewell and stuff like that, you can't just pick the car off with a parking. You have to order.
Got it.
All right, what, what's the, um, anticipated, uh, uh, value of the existing unit?
That, I, I don't even know.
No idea?
Haven't reached out.
But we are gonna, we are gonna, we're gonna auction it off.
You would surplus it and auction it off.
We'll get a lot, we'll probably get something for it.
Yeah.
Probably be pretty decent.
And that's better than us keeping it and using it as a.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause it's, it's to the point.
Requires too much maintenance.
Where, where it's hot, very high maintenance.
Good.
Okay, but I mean, used, you could pay one sixty, one seventy, used.
Yep.
So it'll bring some, it'll bring some.
So it'll bring some.
And it's been taken care of, I mean, it's just old.
It'll bring some money.
What are the hours paid, do you know?
Off the top of my head.
No, I know.
I, I, I didn't think to look at that.
Yeah, no, I know, it doesn't matter, it's old.
All right, so straw poll, 'cause right now we're not voting on this until January twenty-second, anybody have any issues with the village board taking this on? I think this is a necessary piece of equipment, um, if you've seen the one that's out there laboring right now, you know that we got our, we got our twenty-one years out of it, and that this is a necessary purchase, um, anybody have any problems with bonding it out?
I think we shouldn't do that.
Nobody? Okay, so straw poll says the board is in favor of us doing this, we'll move to have that on the agenda for January twenty-second. Nobody? Okay, so straw poll says the board is in favor of us doing this. We'll move to have that on the agenda for January twenty-second.
One more thing I have to put in my, try to get on.
Take with one hand and not with two. Take with one hand and not with two.
Four-figure, not six or three.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, this, this is out of, uh, this is budget money. This is budget money.
I like spending your budget money.
Alright.
This, this here is, well, I, I do know we, we have a new mechanic now, unfortunately, because of the passing of Jim Sebastian. And, uh, everything is going really well with the mechanic, but we're kind of, we're kind of hamstrung a little bit with the, all the new equipment. We don't have any testing. Every time we get a check engine light comes on on any vehicle.
You don't have the gear scanner?
I have a scanner.
We, we have a scanner too. We have one of those, we have one of those little scanners too. They say, here, you have a misfire. But it doesn't tell you, it doesn't tell you, uh, you can reset it to try to get it, you know, it doesn't fix it. So we, we've been doing some research and, uh, what I put before you there is two new computer scanners. One, it will handle all of the large equipment, like our larger dump trucks, the fire trucks and stuff like that. And another one, it'll handle all the police cars, SUVs, pickup trucks, small stuff.
So you're gonna spread the pain out amongst all the departments because it'll involve all the vehicles? Alright, so each department's gonna pay around three grand for this. It's gonna come out of their budget, is what you're saying?
Yeah, we're looking at, uh, what is it, fourteen thousand, five, five thirty-five?
For three units.
For the, for the two separate units.
Dave, what's the, what's the, um, I know probably each year they have updates to the?
Yes, yeah, uh, the first three years are included.
Okay, and how much, how much is it typically for an update after like, after the third year?
That, I didn't get into that, right?
Just if you could find out between now and our next meeting, I just want to get a ballpark of it.
A lot of this stuff now, you can't do anything.
Right.
We're, you know, if we get a, we get a check engine light on, on the dump trucks, one of the new ones, or the garbage truck. We have to run over to Arkells, have them put it on the scanner, they charge us this game, if, if they're gonna fix it, it's
Yeah.
Built in.
I usually just disable it so you can't see it.
Hey, put a tape in it. Just try to open it up, that's all.
It's not your VCR like Lincoln, okay?
Alright, so that, those are my questions.
As long as you don't get a triangle, worry about it.
How long does the scanner last, like, what's its lifespan, and then in terms of updates?
Probably longer than the equipment it's scanning.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, probably longer.
And this, this unit is from Snap-on Tools, which they come around weekly to our job, they, they supply tools or something like that.
Does it give you, uh?
It comes with training for the guys, so.
Does it, and you say it'll cover everything, like all the, when we own?
It will cover everything.
We won't have to go to Arkells for anything if we have this.
Well, I can't say we're not gonna go there ready.
Oh, no, no.
We won't have, we got diagnosed in-house.
The really fancy ones will give you a printout on what work needs to be.
This, this will.
Wow, that's good.
Yeah.
And then, uh, what's the general, I mean, when does, how long does it take to pay for itself? Like, how much are these incremental, if you had to guess?
What's their labor rate?
When they charge us?
Depends on labor rate, I mean.
But what is Arkells' rate, labor rate?
But it's the same as in the, same as in the time to get there plus whatever they charge us when they don't have to pay.
downtime.
Downtime sit, when you're leaving, you're leaving the vehicle sit for some point.
They might tell you.
So it makes sense.
So, it sounds like it makes sense.
Alright.
So, I might put that out there.
So, so this is gonna go, so does the board have any issues with this that we need to address before January twenty-second? Otherwise, it'll be on a resolution to approve on January twenty-second. Okay, thank you, Dave. Alright, next item of business is the water department, Michael. So Michael's job is to make sure that we are set for, as former supervisor Randazzo pointed out, the January twenty-fifth water meeting, which will commence here at seven o'clock on Thursday, January twenty-fifth. So just a couple of days after our next village board meeting. Um, and Michael has been doing a lot of work in preparation for that, to give me all the crib notes I need for any question that Mrs. McGillicuddy pulls out of, pulls out of the air that night so that we're prepared. But Michael, in regards to your report, um, and anything salient this week, last week, next week for the board?
No, I just want to remind everybody that we are coming to a close on the meter project. Um, there's fifty-two accounts that still need a new meter. We, we are sending out certified letters tomorrow to all those fifty-two accounts.
Fifty-two out of how many?
We started at three sixty.
Pretty good.
So, um, so come January thirtieth, they will be, if they don't get their meter changed, they will be issued a seventy-five dollar fee. Uh, we've done all that we could in terms of notifying them. Three first-class postage mails, now a certified mail. It's been on social media, it's been in, in the Cornwall local, News Twelve had it. Uh, we did a code red messaging, so I think we've done our due diligence.
There will be people that come with grievances about that, the board will handle those, just as they would a late fee or a penalty. Obviously, we can't waive resources, we can't waive water fees, but we do have the ability to hear what the reason is that after all these efforts were made, they were not able to, to do that, and we'll, we'll take that on a case-by-case basis.
Yep, and, and, you know, in conjunction with that, we will be changing the way we do our billing in the near future. Um, come around April, springtime, we're gonna be switching away from the postcard-style billing, going to statement-size billing. Um, so it'll be very similar to what you get in the mail from your other utility companies. Um, and then at some point, we hope.
What the benefits are to that, Mike?
The benefits of that is you'll actually get a, a usage graph on the document, so you can compare this year's usage to last year's usage. Um, the village will also have the ability to, um, add in any type of mailers or messages that they want to get out to their customers that we can't do right now with the postcards. Um, we're also gonna be pushing the paperless billing, um, and online billing. Um, our staff will not be printing them, will not be stuffing the envelopes. Our bank's gonna be doing that. Um, and the only cost for that is the postage. They pick up all the other fees in terms of printing and everything else.
Pretty good deal.
Um, and, and the one big thing that people are gonna scratch their head at is when they return their payment with their payment coupon, it's gonna be going to a post office box in Pennsylvania. Um, and what happens with that is to our bank, Orange Bank, uh, Trust Bank.
Orange Bank and Trust.
Bank and Trust, they actually go to the post office box, it's called a lockbox, twice a day. They pick up those bill payments and they deposit it right into our accounts, right then and there. So it's not sitting around in anybody's office waiting to be deposited. Um, so that's, that's one of the big changes. And then hopefully by the end of the year, we're gonna be switching to monthly billing. So you'll be getting a bill every month, that'll help you budget a little bit better.
And that messaging, uh, you mentioned earlier in the department heads meeting, would encourage people to switch to paperless billing?
Correct, correct.
So people getting, getting that notification that they can do that.
Correct, and, and before this goes into effect, we will send a mailer to everybody explaining everything.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments from the board? Michael, any follow-up, anything?
Um, not on that, just to piggyback off Dave, the mayor and I had a conversation about our two thousand and two backhoe. Uh, we are investigating that, we have some repairs. Right now, the cost to repair is twenty-three thousand dollars. We're not so sure, we need a brand-new machine, we're looking at used. But we want to compare it to new because we do get, you know, lower cost on, on state bids, so.
What's the average life expectancy of those, Mike, same thing, around twenty years?
Um, ours is probably a little bit shorter because we keep it outside. Um, so it's out in the elements year-round.
We do that if we had a new water building, wouldn't we?
Correct, correct. Um, so it, it's, it's, we're looking at a used machine because it's not our frontline digging machine anymore. When we got the mini excavator, that basically became a backup.
Got it.
So used might be the way we go, but we're not sure yet.
Okay, and you'll get us all that data and make the pitch. Okay, any questions for the water superintendent? Nope. Alright, moving on, New Windsor EMS. Let me see if there's anything on here. Um, I think the only thing that I'm gonna report, obviously all the details, um, we will go over in greater detail on January twenty-second at our business meeting. Um, what you need to know is they continue since July first of two thousand and twenty-two to have zero missed calls in Cornwall or Cornwall and Hudson. That's the gold standard, it's what we expect. And they've continued that, their promise to make sure that that happened, and they've consistently done that. There will be a space open on the New Windsor Cornwall EMS board. I think it's a seven-member board. Karen Edelman Reyes, who was just sworn in on January first as a councilwoman in the town, is assuming that position. She's agreed to stay on the board, uh, to stay on the board for EMS as Cornwall's lone representative, um, until a replacement can be found. I had a meeting, a Zoom meeting with Karen, Chief Michael Bigg, and Supervisor Wojcowski last week. We all agreed that we need to make a canvas to make sure that we're getting as wide a swath of talent for people that might be interested in that position. It is an unpaid volunteer, no benefits position, but there are people out there that would love to help and be part of that. Um, and we're gonna post that from the town, makes more sense to come from one entity. The town will gather those names. Josh, myself, Chief Bigg will look at them with the consent, the advisement and consent of our boards, and we will appoint somebody. Doesn't matter to us if it's a town resident or a village resident, we just want it to be somebody that's gonna look after Cornwall's best interests on the EMS board, council, whatever it is. So I'll keep in a loop on that. But Karen is going to stay there in place, even though tomorrow is her first meeting in the town of Cornwall for their reorganization meeting. So that's EMS. Moving on to other business. So a number of weeks ago, gosh, I think it's been about a month now, the village board put out a canvas for, um, a part-time treasurer position. Uh, salary range between twenty-five dollars and thirty-five dollars an hour. Obviously, it's, it's encouraged that you have accounting experience and some type of municipal work experience, but not required. Um, I am in receipt currently, as of four twenty-nine fifty-nine today, of thirty applications. I am sorting through them. When I come to a select few that I think, um, we should interview, I will discuss that with the current part-time, not part-time, the current deputy village treasurer, the village clerk, and the village board, and we'll conduct interviews. But we have not found somebody yet that we said, alright, we're gonna conduct an interview with, we're gonna still keep this open and see if we get any more applications across the next week. I'll keep everybody informed. Um, in the interim, Gene Mahoney, God bless her, um, is continuing to, as she promised me, I will not stay one day past April first, which is our reorganization meeting, but is getting us through the budget season and doing gene work, which is top-notch. Okay, OEM updates, reference budget, and proposed weather stations. Two real quick things, this is just to advise the board on this and get your thoughts on it. Um, I asked Kurt Hahn, who has been the Office of Emergency Management Coordinator for the greater Cornwall area, so the town and the village, for sixteen years, um, to come in to see me. I try to meet with him every quarter, just to find out what are things we should be doing. Um, my background in the FBI was as a crisis management coordinator, where we dealt with crisis management and consequence management from the federal level. Um, and wanted to get Kurt's feedback. Um, interestingly enough, the county does not provide a budget for this. So even though Kurt answers under a county authority, Kurt does this as a volunteer job, meaning he uses his personal vehicle, his personal gas, his personal cellphone. Um, I'll give you an example, July ninth, when the world stopped for a while, when two eighteen caved in, and we were trying to house cadets and military personnel that couldn't get back to West Point from here, Kurt set up shop in our, uh, work session room, um, with his radios and went to work. He does a lot of things behind the scene. But he has a zero point zero budget. So I know in the past, the argument was, well, that's a county function, they should pay for it. I asked Kurt what a reasonable number was, Kurt gave me that number, which is ten thousand dollars. I had a conversation with the supervisor for the town of Cornwall, who takes the Office of Emergency Management as seriously as we do. Um, and Tim McCarty, who I think is, I don't know if he's in charge of the EMS portion for the town council, but I think he has, Josh has put him in charge of some of those things, who agrees too that we need to come up with a plan for that. Whether that plan is the town sets out a budget line that comes out of the general fund, meaning we pay taxes into it, so the village wouldn't be hit additionally, other than it coming out of a budget line, or whether it comes out of a budget line there that doesn't come from uh, where village pays taxes into their general fund, then we would agree to do some type of split there. Whether or not it's gonna be seventy-five, twenty-five, or whether it's fifty-fifty, I don't know. I recommend that we do it for a year, we give Kurt a budget, and we say, okay, set up some exercises, get with the fire department. Um, you know, get with the police department, set up some, some exercises, and take care of the equipment, show us what you're spending the money on, and let's see how it goes, and we'll do it on a year-to-year basis and see if it needs to become a permanent budget line. So I know Josh is looking into that with his board, or his council, and I just wanted to give the village board that heads up. Any ideas, anybody opposed to ten thousand dollars, um, being put forth for a budget for the, the Office of Emergency Management that's been operating for sixteen years here in Cornwall with no budget?
I would just like to see something from Kurt in writing.
Yeah.
Uh, because I think that, I know he's been around, I know, I know Kurt, uh, I know he's very involved. But I just think that there needs to be some sort of outline, or, you know, you can call it a business proposal, well, at least some sort of outline. What's the money gonna be spent on, what type of exercises, what, what the exact purpose is? Because I think it's too not enough people understand it and know about it, so the more direction he gives.
Too abstract.
Completely too abstract, yes.
That's what I was wondering too, is it, is it, is it about forecasting, like what?
No, no, so, so in that business, it's response and preparedness. Preparedness includes the exercise you're talking about. So there's a couple of different ways you can do that. You can do a thing called a tabletop, where you call in the fire chief, you call in the police chief, you call in the OEM coordinator, you call in the elected officials, and you sit down at a table and you literally war game something. Okay, at twelve o'clock, there's gonna be a weather vent, it's gonna hit here, this is gonna happen, there's a wildfire on the mountain, there's floods down here. There's a active shooter at Cornwall and Hudson Elementary School, God forbid, there's a terrorist attack over here. What are you doing? There's other ways to do it. There's a full-field training exercise where we do it on a Saturday, and we take this parking lot, we use the DPW yard, we use the parking lot across the street, and we set things up, and we bring in FEMA assets, county assets, and we do all the command post operations. That stuff costs money, you know? And then also, it's, it's maintenance of, of gear and equipment. And do I think that the OEM coordinator should have a phone from the village and the town, or from Cornwall, and not have to spend seven thousand dollars, you know, running up a phone bill when a crisis happens, and for two or three days, he's on the phone using his minutes, and I know you don't do minutes anymore, but my, my argument is just, I agree with Jim and Bill. Should there be some type of itemized business plan to say, this is what I would do? Ten thousand dollars for a community as large as ours with sixteen thousand residents is a pittance. But I think it'd be a great place to start, to say, Kurt, do this for one year, show us what you can do, and then we'll decide next year if this is gonna become a per, permanent budget line.
Because he also needs to point out, I think most people, when they hear Office of Emergency Management, they're thinking federal level, state level, county level. So the question's gonna be, is, okay, what are you doing differently, Kurt, for here that the county's not doing?
Yeah.
So explaining that to residents, exactly what he's gonna be doing, it, it will be. Or how tightly coordinated with the county as well, like, you know, it seems to me that with the right structure in place, it might be worth going back to the county and saying, look, we have somebody here who's been doing this volunteer, you're running the county version of this, is there a way to make sure that this has oversight and planning?
Yeah.
You know?
So I, I know that he has meetings with Allen Mack's office, and that is part of it, it's just that there's no budget.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, they pay for a, you know, OEM coordinator at the county level, they don't pay for it at the municipal level. Because Warwick has one, Newburgh has one, New Windsor has one, Cornwall has one, but there's no budget for it. For me, um, on the preparedness end, and it takes me into my next thing, a couple of years ago, this is before the village bought the Donahue Farm property. Kurt had approached, I don't know if it was our board, if it was the town at the time, um, and made a presentation, and then approached Five Points Mission, who owned Donahue Farm property before we purchased it, about putting a weather station down there. So, you know, they're the frontline people, so when two eighteen washed out, Orange County wasn't there. Now, we're blessed to have Eric Danega live right, right off of two eighteen, but Orange County's not here to see that. The OEM coordinators are the ones that are reporting back and saying, we gotta wash out on two eighteen. The high road is unpassable because of this. We got severe flooding over here because they're on the ground. And one of the things that Kurt had advocated doing was putting up weather stations, and apparently my, my friends and nemesis at times, Senior Hudson, shot that down when it was owned by Five Points Mission to put a weather station there that would determine barometric pressure changes, record this data and send it up, I think it was to SUNY Albany where they have a weather station, determine how much rainfall you get, track the flooding off the mountain, all things which are useful information, if not during a crisis event for the next one, or to catalog it across a period in time. So Kurt is gonna come back, I'm gonna have him come to a, um, a work session and make that. So Kurt is going to come back. I'm going to have him come to a, a work session and make that pitch again. And then we're going to go to, if the board agrees with it, to Senior Hudson and try to figure out if there's a way to do something with a weather station down at the farm property, which is the perfect property at the base of the mountain, cleared open area and right off the river to take weather data. So these are the kind of things that he would be engaged in. So, alright. Alright, so again, nothing for us to vote on. That's just giving you a heads up on that. Alright. Former Supervisor Randazzo and former trustee Randazzo, cause he was on the village board, as was his brother, by the way, Eugene, for a number of years. The joint special meeting with the town, January 25th. What is the purpose of that? I am going to write up something to share on social media in the Cornwall local the week prior. 800 words or less, which is like an op-ed column, basically putting forth the priorities and highlights of what we're looking to, to, to handle. We're looking to talk about two very important things and we're looking to consecrate a relationship. Our plan, and I spoke to Joe McKay today, is to get our IMA codified on January 25th, which means we'll vote for it, the town council will vote for it, and it will go into effect. An IMA, an intermunicipal agreement between the village and the town, for the village to provide water to the town. We've never had one. This opens up the door for us on grants, opportunities, because it makes us 16,000 versus 3,000. We've been delivering water to 16,000, but only getting credit in the grants portal for 3,000 because of village and town and all this other stuff. And will be nice to do. The only sticking point that the town had, which I have no problem with, and I spoke to council today and he agreed with it, is that they would like to make it a 40-year deal, because it's a municipality making a deal with a municipality. 40 years is the standard agreement. I didn't know that. I figured we'd sign an agreement, whether we had to ratify it every year again or do whatever. Or we just sign it and say in perpetuity until blah, blah, blah. But apparently 40 years is the municipal standard. So other than what you've already seen and had your chance to take whacks at, that's the only thing to be added to it. I will certainly let you see it before you're asked to vote on it, but does anybody have a problem with making that IMA a 40-year deal?
I just wonder if that standard, if it is indeed the standard, is, applies to other types of municipal, municipality to municipality contracts or any other types of agreements, because that could be overly constraining in other contexts.
Bill, I don't know the answer to that. I think it is for general purposes, not just restricted to water, but we will have both council here and we will be able to ask those questions. Or you can reach out to Joe earlier and just say, hey, what do you, what, you know, what's the purpose behind this? But yeah, that is the only thing that, now, the town council has not looked at that. I know Josh is planning on giving that to them tomorrow. And then I'm sure they'll have their thoughts too, but from council on their end, the only issue, because it's such a benign, I don't want to say anodyne, but that's what it is. It's just basically pro forma. The only thing that they wanted to add to it was, hey, can we make it for 40 years? I, I don't see a reason not to. Jim?
I don't, I don't see a reason either. I mean, we've been, we've been.
We've been operating without one since 1895.
So adding another 40 is not gonna.
Okay, so that's that. That meeting will be here on Thursday, January 25th, start at 7 o'clock. And yes, of course, somebody asked me today, will there be food and coffee here? And I'm like, do you ever know me to throw a party with that food and some type of coffee or beverage? Yes, we will do our normal thing, because we'll probably get a good turnout for that. Okay, so that, that's the IMA. EV charging stations, Bill, anything to add on that? I, there was a letter to the editor in the Cornwall local and I was confused where they were taking some type of issue with the town and the charging stations, and I don't know if the premise.
Yeah, it was, it was a gentleman who was basically saying that, that we like to spend money is the way I took it. And that the individuals that usually have electric vehicles are wealthy or have more money than most, I guess.
Mayors, stuff like that.
Well, they're, they're mayors, of course. Trustees and.
For Chevy, but the boat costs $19,000.
So I, I think what he, I, I think what he assumed wrongly is, and it is, is that.
These are for the use of the.
Well, it's for the use of them exclusively, which is not, but it's that it's for free.
Right. It is a fee-based.
Correct. I don't think the gentleman realized.
So let me go on the record to say this. So I have a Jeep, which is a hybrid. So I use both gas and electric. I have a charging station at my house. There's no reason for me to use a charging station in the village and pay higher per kilowatt than I would pay at my own home on a plan I have with Central Hudson, where I get a lower rate so long as I don't charge between the hours of 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM in the afternoon. So, but again, this is one of those things about educating people. It's not his fault. It's not anybody's fault that, that suggests that. It's like people that have these arguments about the water stuff and why are we doing this? It's, it's about communication and letting people know that. We want to, and this is long before I had an electric vehicle, we had talked about potentially putting up charging stations, one down at the riverfront, one at the municipal lot behind the bandstand and one here in the municipal lot. These are charging stations that I can assure you, Bill Brain and I will never use, because it doesn't make any sense. You have to pay to charge your vehicle, but we want to give people the opportunity to do that, that drive vehicles that can charge them. So with that as a pretext to all of this, Billy, where do we stand?
No new developments, except that I spoke to Real Term Energy. They're going to provide a second quote. They say that they have, have discovered efficiencies in their process. This was, I'm an excellent negotiator. I was silent for a while and then they said, we'll give you another quote. So that's, so that's forthcoming. And then NAIPA, I spoke with them and I'm looking for paperwork from them as well. Also spoke to Central Hudson last week, just to confirm the details around the make, EV make ready program and whether or not we would need to avail ourselves of that program. They gave me the impression that what we should do is just get our quotes straight from three potential vendors and then provide. Those vendors will work with Central Hudson to understand what the rebate or the incentives are so that we get a, a final number. My problem was, I, I don't want to know what's the number and then figure out what do we get from the EV make ready program? I want to understand what the bill will be for us. So I'm kind of talking to both of them, but I maybe don't have to talk to Central Hudson as much as I thought I did. So hopefully within two weeks, I should, I'm going to reach out to a third. There's, there's a list that the state has. I'm going to put out just another, I'm going to look through those and see which one's the most local and ask for a third quote. Or maybe I'll do two more if I haven't, if I haven't gotten anything back solid from NAIPA. To try and see if we can get some real numbers to look at.
Excellent. Alright, thank you for that update. Keep us in the loop on that and I know you will.
Question about the budget though, I don't think we have anything budgeted against installation. You know, Real Term had a, having done the town ones, they had a number that they said they thought the town was out of pocket. It sounded very low. It's just for those two, two stations. We would be doing a little bit more, but even if that, if that is the scale, the ballpark that we're talking about, it would not be an outrageous amount of money. So.
It was modest.
Yeah, so we don't have anything budgeted against it at the moment. So I did want to just raise that as, as a budget question, whether we want to consider putting something in the budget, consider whether it comes out of contingency, consider some other method of.
What's, what is, what is the ballpark?
They, this is, you know, the most informal kind of quote. He thought, he said, I'm pretty sure the town was out of pocket about $20,000.
10 per. That's about the going rate, right? Between nine and 10.
I guess. I mean, there is, there's some infrastructure development that has to be done, but that's the EV make ready program. There's Central Hudson can fund up to 100% of that or up to 90% of that. So it wouldn't be vastly out beyond that, you know.
I think that would be a matter of sitting down and just looking at what particular budget line. Dave always yells at me because I think everything should come out of parks, but looking at the particular budget line and figuring out which one. And I know Gene always used to cringe when I said, we're just moving over from contingency funds. We'll figure out a way. Okay. Alright, thank you for that. Alright, next, next order of business, the Cornwall Yacht Club leased a village property at Donahue Memorial Park update. This is a placeholder. I know that we are in negotiations with the yacht club. And negotiations are moving in the direction where they need to be moving. And when we have some information to deliver in regards to where we are in that and what the final determination is, we will brief everyone. But as far as right now, we are negotiating in good faith with the yacht club and working towards resolving the two matters of the leased property and shore road. Correct me on this too, because I could be wrong in this. The public hearing that we opened at the last business meeting, did we close it or leave it open?
We never opened it.
We didn't open it? I thought we opened it and elected just to keep it open. Steve, do you remember?
No, we didn't. No.
I thought we opened it.
No, 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 no. We did not open it.
I missed that one. It was the 18th and I was not there.
We did not open it.
We were there virtually, but not here for that. Yeah, okay, then we did not open it. So we'll keep that in abeyance until the time comes and if we strike an agreement on a global, then we'll have to do public hearings again. Yeah, okay. I thought for some reason we had opened it, left it open, which you can do, because that way you don't have to reopen it. It just stays open, but if you're telling me we didn't, I'll go back and check the minutes. I, I should do that. Okay. Alright, so that is that matter. Proposed franchise agreements. We'll talk about this more at the business meeting. We're still working out the language for.
Yeah, I gotta talk to McKay and, and Dave.
And I really need you to come back and say, you're comfortable and you to come back and say, I'm comfortable with it, because we're not going to get what we want. And I'm okay with not getting everything I want, but at least if we're making concrete steps forward with them to hold them accountable, to get something in return for them leaving up all these wires, I, I would be happy and consider that a victory. Alright. Mountain road remediation. Michael, Dave and I had a Zoom call with FEMA. What day was that last week? Thursday, Thursday? So we have a new, what's your, what's your title? Project managers? Yeah, we have a new one, which is fine. The other gentleman that were on the call had, had been here from the beginning with us in regard to each of the projects that the water department superintendent and the DPW superintendent had put in. And we drilled down into the nitty gritty of each of them to figure out what the village has done, what still needs to be done and what the ultimate cost of these things are going to be. So I will keep the board in the loop on this, but we have two plus million dollars worth of remediation to water properties and to mountain road as a result of the July night storm. And we're going to get that stuff fixed. And while we're doing it, it's hard to deal with the individuals, the people who, especially now with what's coming on Tuesday and Wednesday. And Dave, thank you for having your guys out there. I saw that all the storm drains have been cleared out. So as the snow starts to melt and we get this three to five inches of rainfall, there are people panicking about where all that water is going to go. And there's a lot of the work that we cannot do without FEMA's help up on the mountain. There are tens of millions worth of dollars worth of remediation, not related to the July night storm, that we could and should do going forward to take pipes that are this small, that should be this wide, to move water off the mountain and get it to the Hudson River, which is where it's trying to go before it destroys people's yards and houses. And so that's what we're working on, but.
I'll, I'll comment on that though. The storm systems that are put in in most municipalities are designed for 100-year storms. Not 500 and 1,000-year storms, which were the last two that we.
And, and that was, you know, and I, and I, and I, I don't think it was hyperbole, but that was, what makes it hard is the governor said that this July night storm was a thousand-year storm, but that doesn't help Mrs. McGillicuddy. When you go to her house and you say, the governor said that this only happens once in a thousand years. It doesn't matter to her when her bottom floor is washed out. And unfortunately on the boulevard, which is part in Cornwall, that is most hit by the water coming down and washing out first floors. And that's the only flood plain we have down in the lower village, right Dave?
The engineers and whatnot, that's what they're designed to. That's what the stuff was built to when it was put in for 100-year storms. That's the standard.
Yeah, but now we've had three successive storms, December 23rd, 2022, July night, 2023, December 17th, 2023, where we've, our system has been overwhelmed and it seems like each one of those three storms hit differently, even though we got hyper-localized rains hit differently. And, you know, this house got hit really hard for this one, didn't get hit, this one got hit worse than this one and this one got hit worse. Yeah, well, Irene and Sandy were two others. Irene was the, was, was the big one, but Dave.
The flooding from Irene wasn't from.
Are there any things that we could, should be doing in advance of Wednesday?
We, we are out to, well, we had, we had some snow removal today to do on the main drag and stuff like that. So we had parking for the businesses and shops and stuff in the area. But we were out doing the storm drains as well. We have nearly 500 storm drains. So it takes quite a bit of time to get them all opened up. So we'll be out again tomorrow. I mean, if you have one in front of your house, don't be afraid to take a snow shovel and knock the snow off it. It'll help us out.
500 storm drains, 325 hydrants. Mike, how are our hydrants looking?
Red and white.
Most of them.
I put that one on a T for you.
No, the guys are out there, you know, it takes them a couple of days to get them, them cleaned out. We just asked that, you know, we, we used to, tongue in cheek was adopt the fire hydrant program, you know, during this time of the year. So if you have one near your house, go on out there and shovel it out. Even though there wasn't much snow, most of them are probably very visible right now. If we have another storm, it's just going to keep piling up, so.
Okay, alright, moving on to the next one. We already did the DPW vehicle surplus. Dave? Were we talking about, that was the excavator, correct?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna hold that off. We can do that next week.
Got it. Special meeting where I took care of that. I already talked about New Windsor EMS, RFP proposals. So we are, and the town's doing the same thing. Now, the town is going to appoint everybody back at their reorg meeting tomorrow. But then this year, they're going to put out RFPs. RFPs are requests for proposals for contracted positions to the village, to the town, to a municipality. We have an attorney to the village. We have engineers to the village. We have an audit firm to the village. We have tree cutting services to the village. We have engineers that provide services to the village. We have plumbers. We have excavators. I talked to the village board. I talked to our superintendents. It has been years that we have RFP, meaning put out requests for proposals and said, if you'd like this job, put in a request for a proposal. Doesn't mean that anybody that's working for the village currently has done a bad job, but I think that this should happen. My estimation is every three years. It's not every year where it doesn't make sense. You don't establish any kind of continuity whatsoever. But I don't think 10 years in a position to a municipality is necessarily healthy unless you are the best one out there and unless others have an opportunity to put in for it. So we will submit those. Mike and Dave are going to work on those that apply mostly to them. And we will put those out, because I would like to have the village board take a look at this and make a determination before our reorg meeting. So we don't reappoint somebody and then a month later say, oh, but we're going to go in a different direction. So that is the plan. And again, has nothing to do with the quality of service that we are getting from our contractors. They do a great job. I deal with them almost on a daily basis. But I just think it's the right thing to do that every minimum three years. I know there's arguments whether or not it should be every two years or five years or 10 years or one year. But the village board can make that determination decision, but we do want to see what else is out there. So that's what the purpose of that is. It's not because we're unhappy. Okay, garbage rate increase in 2024, 2025 budget. So apparently you know that we're increasing rates by 5%. Dave tells me that since 2018, 2019, since then tipping fees have increased by 20%. So we believe that a 5% increase is a modest increase to help offset the higher cost it costs us to get rid of your garbage. And in the beginning, when we used to collect recyclables, we got money for them. Now we pay to dump recyclables off. So we're collecting recyclables and then have to pay to get rid of them. So tipping fees have increased. That's why built into this budget is a 5% increase in the garbage rates.
And with that, we do the electronics recycling also, which costs us money to, to get rid of as a free service to the village residents.
Which they appreciate.
Oh, people, people greatly appreciate it.
Plus for, along with the tipping fee is the cost of fuel.
Fuel.
The transfer station not being on 17K anymore. They're going all the way out to Hampton Bur. Crazy.
It's an hour and a half trip.
We do actually get some revenue from the recycling, right? But it's a very.
A little bit on paper.
I'm sure that the cost of collecting it is far outweighs the revenue. Recycling. We got like $1,500 a year or something like that.
Now we're, we pay to get rid of.
We pay to get rid of them. We don't make any, like I always thought that.
There's a, a very tiny budget line here. That's why I was, I always thought we ended up.
Yeah, we, we.
Didn't we used to get some for paper, Dave?
We used to get something for everything. We started it, but that changed.
The revenue line for, for that, that is actually all recycling that we deal with in Newburgh. Any of our scrap metal, stuff like that, that we, that we collect.
Stuff like that. Stuff like that.
We we have a thirty yard roll off in our yard down there.
Materials, it's not a household.
Yeah, it's 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 basically junk and they-
Well, let me get, let me, let me, let me get a rundown from the board's liaison, a trustee that's in charge of recyclables.
So, so back in two thousand and ten, yes, up to, I'd say only up to about two thousand, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, I said two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, we we, uh, had revenue from it. In fact, we had, uh, Mr. Taylor from, um, Taylor Recycling came in a couple of times. Cause he was go- he was gonna buy our, uh, recycling. But that has gone by and by, so we haven't made any money, I'd say, in a good half a dozen years.
It's been about that.
Yeah, it's probably a little more than that and, but we thankfully, we we partnered up with the company that, I can't remember their name now. I've, excuse me for that because it's changed name so many times. They used to be up in Newburgh at the old Pepsi plant. That's where we used to take all of our recycling, we used to set, in the village, we used to separate the glass and the paper and all the plastic.
Yeah.
And then they went to single stream, they built a nice big new facility on the other side of the river over in, uh, Beacon. So we take it over there now. But the market for recycling has fallen out because everybody is recycling.
Right.
It's just, you know. When you don't have it, it's val- it it's valued where they can't get it, yeah.
I got you.
Is that tipping fees comparable to the garbage tipping fee?
No, our, we we've been in there with them, uh, if you take your recycling to the county, which you can, we can take it out to New Hampton, which we've done, when they had a problem at their facility. It's the same cost for garbage.
Garbage, yeah.
It's like a hundred and twenty-five dollars a ton to get rid of. I think we're paying about ninety-eight dollars a ton across the river.
Alright, well, thank you, thank you, thank you for that education, but that's, uh, to explain the, uh, five percent tipping fee, so. Um, alright, I'm sorry, the five percent increase in garbage rates as a result of the increase in tipping fees. Okay, memorial bench and trees policy review, I only put this on here because I know the board has been grappling with this for a long time. We have people that want to put up memorial benches down at the waterfront, which I get it, I understand. Um, and they're, it's nice we have them down there, but when everybody wants to put one down there and it completely occludes or obscures the 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 view of the river, we, the board had to put a, I call it a soft moratorium on accepting benches for down there. Um, and the board was looking to come up with a tree policy, the board had discussed how we were gonna handle benches. We've, we've done a couple of alternate things, we had one placed in front of village hall here, we had a spot for it, somebody donated the bench, we installed it there for him. We have some other spots around the village in the commercial business district where we'd like to put benches if they get offered. But I had a woman who came in who recently lost her ex-husband and her children very much so. He enjoyed the riverfront, um, like every person that has benches down there, the families are very deeply connected to the riverfront and wanna put one down there, I asked her just to hold that thought in abeyance. Let me get back with the board, I know we had talked about potentially coming up with a plan maybe for a walkway down there where we use memorial paver stones, where we give people alternatives, there's also the tree option. Where do you put trees, cause people then say, well, I wanna put the tree down at the waterfront and I'm like, well, you can't put it down there cause it's gonna block views as well. We have trees there, but some of those trees are dying, like the willow trees that we just had to trim because they had dead limbs on them. How do we leverage the Donahue Farm property here, can we use that? We don't wanna plant trees again where it's gonna, you know, obscure, you know, view, views and things like that, but are there places down there? So I'm just gonna ask the board to think about again, because I'm gonna raise this probably in February, um, for us to really do a deep dive and come up with something concrete on that and on our rental fee schedule for village properties. So if somebody wants to, the only thing that the pavilion has been blocked off for is Riverfest. I've given that, told them, yes, the board's gonna support you having it take over and use it. Other than that, people have been ca- calling and contacting me and saying, I wanna get it for such and such. We have to come up with a plan. My thought is, we allow village residents to have the longest window to reserve it. So we give them the opportunity to reserve it six months out. We allow town residents the opportunity to reserve it four months out. We allow everybody else to reserve it two months out. So that's one of my thoughts, my wife gave me that, cause that's what they do at Disney in their vacation plan. That's how they work those things and I thought that would be a perfect application where you're not giving the village priority where if somebody outside reserves it and then a village resident comes in and says, oh no, I got a, uh, First Communion that day, I want it, so now you're gonna bump out the visitor. You're just allowing visi- village residents the first right, town residents the second right, everyone else the third right.
That's exactly what the town of Birmingham does for their kayak rack.
Yeah.
So it's, they give first to the village residents, they open it to them, then the town, and then outsiders. And then, and a tiered fee, uh, tiered base fee, so that that would, that would make sense though.
And we need to figure out how are we gonna do it, are we gonna allow people to reserve it all day? Are we gonna have a morning from eight to twelve and then have a, a one to six? Or are we gonna allow people to be there in the evening, the park is only open from dawn to dusk. The bathrooms are only open from dawn to dusk. We'll probably have the same policy with the pavilion since it's part of the park, dawn to dusk. But we need to work out that minutia, because that's what's gonna happen and as soon as we allow somebody to reserve it and then have to go back and change the rules, we need to come up with a solid plan and spring is right around the corner. And I'm telling you, people are gonna wanna use it and we need to come up with a, with a plan. Okay, so, um, just giving you that heads up, Savage Wonder update, I received an email, I think I courtesy copied. I don't know if I courtesy copied the board on it, Jimmy, I may have courtesy copied you, Bill, I probably should have courtesy copied you, uh, you didn't see it?
Between, uh, Michael, can you?
Yes, yes, in regards to the, um, Savage Wonder and, um, the questions that Vet Rep has, which I'm trying to work with them on, which will probably need some help from the board, especially from the lawyer angle, on how you address some of the concerns of Ceni Hudson in regards to structures and how we define structures and all that. They're good, they're just, meaning Ceni Hudson, they know we're working on that. I also asked them to come up and for us to have a meeting to take a look in the meadow and where the water is running off of the mountain and where the two big streams come together off of mountain road and where they then sluice down into the river and where that overflow basically swallowed up the meadow behind Mary Donahue's house and filled up her basement with six feet of water. Thank goodness for DPW and the water department, the water department came with the excavator and cut a trench, which got the water away from her property. We were able to get her, to get her, um, you know, to get her pumped out. But we need some help from Ceni Hudson on that too, cause any work that we do there has to be run through them.
Probably gonna be permanent, yes. Oh, wow, Wynden Pond.
Okay, um, so that's that, that's that, that's that, I think that's it, other than giving you some dates from my end. January ninth, six P M, the fire committee meeting, um, that is going to be chief? In the work session room, and you've worked out with Megan to have the door popped open for you and all that, correct? Wonderful. January ninth, six thirty P M, Bill, you still attending these, a Donahue committee meeting, which I'm guessing is gonna be here.
Yep.
Okay, uh, January tenth, seven P M, in the work session room, we got a busy month here with meetings. The Riverfest committee meeting, January fifteenth, which is Martin Luther King's, uh, federal holiday, his birthday, is gonna result in the village being closed. That means that Monday, let me remind people, if you have trash pickup on that Monday, you will not have it that day. And Dave is-
Next year, right, I see that.
Well, Dave said, you were gonna, you'll pick everything else up?
They'll, they'll be picked up on Tuesday.
On Tuesday.
There's a notice in the local.
I saw it, and there's a notice on our Facebook page.
Facebook page, we'll get it as well as our website.
Alright, January twenty-second, seven P M, is the village board meeting where we will vote the resolution to pass the budget. If any trustee speak now or before January twenty-second, if you have questions, Jean is away. January eighth, I think through the, Dave, do you remember? It's like a week and a half, she's visiting family down in Atlanta, she has her laptop, she has her phone. She says as long as it's during reasonable hours during the day, she has no problem answering a question. So if you ask me first or department head and we can't answer it, you can reach out to her and get that question answered. But we will vote on that, January twenty-second, two weeks from tonight, on the, on the budget. Alright, and then January twenty-fifth, seven P M, the joint water committee meeting with the town and I plan on having a ceremony to ink the deal with the IMA that night and then to have an open and free flowing discussion on water sales and water rates, and I think it'll be a fun meeting, buckle up. Okay, that's all I got, let me go around the table, I'll start with trustee Paleota.
I don't think I have much to add, um. Uh, no, I'm, I'm excited about thinking about sort of ways to, um, handle the benches down at the river.
Are you being facetious or serious?
I swear, I really am.
So I would, I would love to put you in charge of helping with a workup or a structure on how the board at an upcoming work session meeting, sooner supposed to later, can have a discussion and just put some ideas together. We're struggling, we don't wanna tell people no, we also don't wanna just let things clutter up the waterfront. So we're trying to come up with a fair, equitable, smart, sensible plan.
I like it.
Would you work on that for me?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
Is it, uh, you know, some of that, what could happen down there too, just leave it. Um, may, uh, depend on how we finish, the finished product down there after New York Forward.
Yeah, so that is a real good point, Dave, and that's a conversation that I had with the yacht club and with a number of other entities. But we will find out in March, hopefully not April, but it could pu- be pushed that long. Which of the thirteen projects that were submitted, they were, they were municipal, they were not for profit and they were, uh, private sector projects, which ones are being funded? Remember, we have four point five million dollars, we submitted projects in the amount of around seven point eight or seven point nine mil- million. They wanted us to double what the money was, because they knew they were gonna chip away at things. And, um, once we get that, we'll know where the money is going. Um, we did, and I already made the announcement, we did get two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars from the federal government for a, a parks grant, a trails grant, which is huge for us, because I notified New York Forward. It is big seed money going towards our Dock Hill Road Connector Trail.
Right.
Um, and being able to say to them, we got a quarter of a million dollars coming in, because that project is about one point two million dollars. We got a quarter of a million dollars coming in, the village will be on a hook for a small portion of that. The others, I have some other grants out there and about six hundred and change, almost seven hundred thousand from New York Forward. So keep your fingers crossed, I think the local's gonna do a little feature on, uh, on the Dock Hill Connector Trail, but that's, that's a big one for the village. Alright, anything else, Lori?
No, I'm listening.
Anything on the Cornwall Youth Committee?
Um, nothing to report just yet.
Got it, well.
Yeah, we're, we're merging with the, well, not merging, we're bec- becoming a subcommittee to the, um, Cornwall and Hudson, the special events.
So what that means is, is that just like the Independence Day Committee, which is a standalone committee, um, the Cornwall Youth Committee, which right now is a subsidiary of the Town Direct Department, will now go out on their own, so they've already discussed this and it's been approved by the town. Um, what does this allow them to do, it allows them to fundraise. As a municipal entity, you cannot fundraise, but when you're on your own, you can fundraise. So, um, I have to say, an outstanding job and I think that you're a victim now of your excellence because just like when Nikki Correa started the first ball drop in, Mike, December thirty-first of two thousand and one. Um, so this was our twenty-second year of doing this, um, this was our inaugural year of doing the junior ball drop. We estimate we had between three and five hundred parents and kids, um, at that event. Probably a thousand to twelve hundred at the midnight event, but I have to say, the kids' ball drop was a lot of fun.
It was fantastic, there, everyone was just raving and having so much fun. Parents were enjoying it as much as the kids, because we don't all stay up anymore. You know, when you have little ones, we're, we're in that, so it was a, it was a great opportunity to share it with our kids. And the extra fun stuff that we, that we added with the smores making and things, it was, it was fantastic, it was a lot of fun. There was no, no upset, everything was great and we loved how it was set up by our village with all the trucks, the kids even loved that.
The, the kids had no idea that that was done as a security precaution.
Oh, I thought it was touch a truck. Jesus, I-
Yeah, they saw the trucks out there, thought, look at everything you brought out.
It was showing all the new trucks, that's what he was doing.
And it was simply to block things off and keep it safe. But awesome, you guys did an amazing job and now you're a victim of your own success, because it's not going away. It's gonna be a feature now every year to do this, so excellent job. Alright, uh, Billy.
Uh, thank you for clearing it snow, um, and-
Keep up the good work.
For tomorrow, for whatever happens. Uh, and, um, you know, it's funny, oh, it just, uh, the, an additional, um, municipal gatherings on the seventeenth, there's a uh, planning board hearing, um, related to the Treetop, uh, proposed warehouse project at the-
Seven P M at the high school.
High school, yeah, it's the only place to hold it.
And that's in relation to Treetop, right?
Yeah, the proposed warehouse project on the former Cornwall Commons site.
Was that on the seventeenth, Bill?
Yeah, I have a feeling that is going to be a full auditorium.
When you said we would have a fun meeting, I was like, oh, there's another fun meeting coming.
Yes, you're absolutely right, yeah, so I have a feeling there's gonna be a lot of attendees there, that's why I said, that's cool. I thought it was Thursday.
I think it's the se- Thursday the seventeenth, is that right, or I have a date wrong?
It's Wednesday the seventeenth.
Pretty sure it's the seventeenth, so.
It definitely is, it's Wednesday the seventeenth.
Um, I have Wednesday, you're right, it is Wednesday seventeenth.
Wednesday, sorry.
Yeah, seven o'clock and they're allowing three minutes per speaker. They will probably be a hundred plus people speaking, so buckle up. This is something that I will go to the beginning of, listen to the beginning and then I'll go home and wa- and I'll watch it on my phone because it's gonna go on till, till eleven o'clock or midnight.
Yeah, I, I guess, just having, uh, been acquainted with, well, that site for eleven years. Uh, just that, if anybody listening or here or anybody is interested in weighing in pro or con, it, you know, it's best to have a focused message, best to be speaking to the actual, you know, issues that are on the table as regards the permitting process. There are very specific legal requirements for permitting something like this or not permitting something like this and the general kind of, uh, commentary that people often bring to these kinds of things is, it's worth, it helps, it helps build energy on certain sides of questions, but it doesn't always speak to the actual practicality.
And they do their best to try to keep the question, not the questions, but the statements, but you're right, people are gonna go up there and do what they want. But I do believe that the supervisor's planning to speak in, in regards to impact on the Cornwall community. I do believe Senator Scoofus is coming back from Albany. I don't know if the county exec is coming, I'll ask him about that, but I think there'll probably be some folks there that are in elected positions to speak. I will not be speaking, um, not that I don't have a dog in the fight, it's just that I'm just, I'm agnostic. I wanna continue to hear as much as possible, but I will be there to listen and to, to, to take it in. Alright, anything else, Bill?
Uh, no, that was, uh, that was my only, thanks, thank you, and that.
Okay, David.
Uh, great job on the ball drops, both of them. I thought the security was good that night, it's good to have that. Good job by Steve's people too, everybody who's down there, all the guys who gave up their night to work, appreciate that. Um, one other thing, uh, the, the town passed the, uh, tree ordinance. So it'll be coming to a, uh, theater near you, uh, very soon, I would imagine. We'll be looking at it, I'll get copies of it.
I'm gonna have you present that to the board at a work session.
Pretty good.
Yep, I agree.
It's not perfect.
It's not perfect, but.
But it gives us a starting point and I think that in a great sense, I have read it and I've obviously talked to the people that were the architects of it, Dave has been there from Dave, day one on it. And I think that some of the hysteria and panic that we were gonna come onto people's properties and tell them, you can't cut this lilac bush down, um, or we're gonna sue you, um, or cite you, i- is just, is panic and hysteria that's, that's misplaced. This is to protect clear cutting, this is protect against, this is for erosion control, this is, uh, you know, this is more so, um, a guide on what we are looking to do to encourage people. There are village trees that we take down, I cringe every time Dave comes and shows them to me, but I look at them, they're diseased, they're dangerous, they're hanging over roadway. Um, in the public, interest of public safety, they have to come down. We have to have a smart policy and I think the CCAC and Dave, credit to him for being on that and going to those, those long meetings, has come up with something workable, I plan to bring it to this board and I expect at some point in time, if we don't have anything to add to it or change to it, to take a vote on it and making it part of the village code. Okay?
Does the town, is the town's intent to make it part of their code, or is this just a policy or a guideline that they're?
It's gotta be code if they can send the code enforcement officer out to cite people. It's gotta be code if they can send the code enforcement officer out to cite people.
When did they pass it? Did they, did they already?
They passed the policy, so I don't know what that translated to.
Right, that's what I'm just saying.
Oh, I don't know if it's on the uh, the fee schedule or not.
I, I think it's supposed to go into their code.
It would have to go into.
It would say amending the town code section three twenty-two.
That's what I was getting at. Have they already done that? Or is this, you're saying that they've already?
I know they passed it.
Anything else, David?
No, that's it.
Jimmy?
Uh, just accolades to the Fire Department, Police Department and DPW. Thank you very much for New Year's glory, Beth. As Jim already said, I can add to that. You're, as they would say in the army, today's overachieving is tomorrow's standard. So, you set the standard uh for next year, so hopefully you can duplicate that. You, yes, that was excellent. Everything was. Well-run. I had a, I had a blast. It was, it was, it was great. It was just a great thing to go to for the kids, so much appreciated. Absolutely, absolutely. So, all good.
You got her name right too.
It's always a plus.
That's the new standard. That is the new standard. Alright, I'm uh echoing what everybody said. So, you got an alibi, Dave?
Yeah, one, one thing I didn't uh. I didn't bring up before I missed, but uh Central Hudson has completed their gas main project on the mountain.
I've seen that. They pulled that.
So, they're, they're out of there now. I'm gonna set up a meeting with their uh head engineer. I've already reached out to them. Gonna, I, I have a couple of ideas that I think uh will benefit Central Hudson and the village as well. With restoration because you can't, they can't do any further restoration right now because of the time of year.
But let me ask you this. We were successful with CSX in getting them to repair our waterfront roadway. All the damage that they did, and I understand why they had to do it. Is there any shot at us being able to get a repaving paid for by then?
I have a couple of things in mind. I don't wanna get, get out, I don't wanna get out over my skis. But I've had our vendors up there. We've looked at a couple of things and I've got a couple of proposals that I wanna give to Central Hudson. They're not gonna fund it all by any means. But I'm looking at getting.
They'll be held to the standard of the, of the commission, so whatever the rules are, a lot of it will be total synergies.
Can you, can you do this off the top of your head? The difference between the monies we got from CHIPS last year versus the monies we're gonna get from CHIPS this year? Cause we took, we took a beating on that this year, right? This new budget, what you projected is significantly less. CHIPS is the money we get to do repavings. We get less this year.
Well, that, now, the, the CHIPS fund, we, we have allocated CHIPS funds. One, one thing with the CHIPS fund that you can do, which I did for several years past, is you can roll those funds over. If you do some other projects. We've had, we have some. Fund balance, so to speak, in CHIPS. So, we, we didn't lose money when you saw that we, we spent more than we got. We had that money allocated. To us by the state, which I, I still have some rollover funds. What I'm looking to do is try to use some of those rollover funds and. Makes, make a uh deal with Central Hudson, which we've done in the past. Where they don't have to come in and do their restoration because it costs them considerably more to have a company come in to do it. Than we can have our vendors do it for. So, what they spend, I can get. Twenty-five percent or thirty-five percent more work done for to save money. So, I've, I've got a couple of plans. I know there's some people that, you know, don't want any change or they don't want any elevation differences. But I've got a couple of ideas for up on Deer Hill Road and Mountain Road that would put those roads into. Looking like Hudson Street. I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, alright, appreciate it. Alright, any other alibis? Alright, if no further ado, I'm gonna make a motion to close the work session. May I have a second? All in favor? Alright, um, Michael, can you handle that? Keep in mind that microphones are still hot until he gets us out of there. Thank you, everybody.
No, you actually knocked it out.
Oh, I am going over to see newly minted supervisor Bedetti tomorrow in New Windsor.